Okay, folks, we are ready to begin the show. I'd like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board, January 10th, 2018 meeting, Memorial Town Hall, we're on the third floor, it's seven o'clock. We have minutes, couple of vouchers, correspondence, a number of planning office items, and hopefully it will be a meeting that will go pretty quickly. Welcome back, everybody.
Happy 2018.
Happy 2018. I don't know about you, but it's just going by faster and faster. So, with that...
Wait till you get old.
Minutes.
Yes, I moved to approved draft meeting minutes for 13 December 2017, Planning Board meeting as written and amended.
Second. Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the minutes of December 13th, 2017. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to vouchers, we have two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $1,200.
Second. Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the two vouchers for Bailey Lane to H.L. Graham Associates, one in the amount of $915.
What's his name?
And the other for $285.
And the other for $285. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, John, I don't, there's nothing there for us.
No.
Okay, so moving on from correspondence, which was from the town of Newbury, courtesy correspondence, moving into the surety reduction request for Turning Leaf subdivision.
Good evening. I'm well. Melissa Ogden of Mann &amp; Mann for Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC, we're here to request for our correspondence dated December 27th, for a reduction of the surety amount by $204,748 and in accordance with the dispersment certificate and related exhibits that we provided with.
Sounds pretty clear. John, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, it's all in the staff report, and there is a draft motion, everything's in accordance with Mr. Vargas' written recommendation to the board.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Um...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Harry.
I'd like to make a motion, if you'll hear it.
Yeah.
Move to approve the surety reduction request for Turning Leaf subdivision to reduce the present surety held by the town $204,748 to $48,560, as per the written recommendation of site engineer Dave Varga, tripartite estimate dated November 17, 2017.
Second.
Just a quick question on this, so Dave Varga says that $204,000 should be released, the motion says that it should be reduced from $204,000 down to $48,000, those two aren't quite consistent, so I just...
I didn't hear that.
He recommended $204,000 be released.
So we're in the discussion phase now.
Yeah, the draft motion doesn't say, "Give him a check."
For $204,000, you're looking for $204,000.
Yeah, for the reduction in the bond amount.
Alright, so that's not quite what the motion says.
By the town, surety held by the town of $204,000, what is the full amount at this point?
Right now, it looks like it's $268,808.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. So we just need to modify that motion.
Yeah, I'd like to re- remove that.
Motion has been agreed to, been withdrawn, so noted.
I move to approve the surety reduction request for the Turning Leaf subdivision and reduce the present surety held by the town to $48,560, as per the written recommendation of site inspection engineer Dave Varga's tripartite estimate, 17 November, 2017. So, the final amount, well, that was my motion.
That's the motion, yeah.
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded, thanks for that clarification. Any discussion?
I have one. On number six there, why did he put as-built plans as he...
Number six.
Standing? Is that...
We're on page six?
No, no. It's in the front row. Oh, as-built plans.
What does that, can you explain that to me?
I'm assuming that that's just at the conclusion of the project, is an as-built plan, which is one of the final components that takes place, which is a survey that verifies what's being built.
On-the-ground survey, so that the town can accept the road. We need an as-built.
Mr. Chairman, I would state that the developer is in the process of working with the town, I know that Jill Mann had a conversation with John, and they've also spoken with Janet Patano about having the road accepted at the next Animal Town meeting, and then they're working with Dave Varga to finalize an as-built.
Yep, great. So that's what that's for. Any more discussion? No discussion any further, all in favor?
Aye.
Five a, zero, and no abstains.
Not having to use your signature.
Do you want to... So, item three, the agenda is the A&R Plan, three lot A&R Plan, off Kenny Street and Long Hill Road. John, what would you like to add of this at this point?
In accordance with the handout, short one-page handout I just gave everybody, the applicant at this time has chosen to request the leave-to-withdraw of the plan.
Okay.
That's the short story.
I move pursuant to the applicant's written request below to allow leave-to-withdraw without prejudice, the Form A Plan showing three proposed lots off Kenny Street is shown on the town assessor map 16 parcel 48.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded, per the applicant's request below, to allow leave-to-withdraw without prejudice, the Form A Plan showing three proposed lots off Kenny Street is shown on the town assessor's map 16 parcel 48. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice wrap-up for that. Yeah. So, we are now going to, let's see, Planning Office reviewing and endorsement of the conditional approval of the Bailey Lane OSRD.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
One sec.
Sorry.
Yep. Come on up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Yep.
For the Bailey Lane OSRD.
Second.
We're still in hearing.
Motion has been made to reopen the public hearing, and it has been seconded for Bailey Lane. Any discussion?
We did continue this from...
Yeah, we did.
You have to, we didn't close it.
We couldn't, if we had closed it, we were...
No, I understand, I just didn't know if we had specifically set today's date, but yeah.
This was a continuance.
Yeah. It was the 18th of January.
I was just checking.
Any more discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are now open. John, just an update?
Uh, yes, in preparation for tonight's meeting, in accordance with our December meeting, all of the amendments suggested by the Planning Board at that meeting have been incorporated into the draft decision, well, the decision that's before you this evening, that was supplied to each board member. The applicant has also looked through it, and to this date, it doesn't have any exceptions.
4A?
4A. Yes, I did, matter of fact, I thought I informed you of that.
Oh, I know, sorry.
Let's see what that reads now. It would be Roman numeral 4A, and that is found on page 10 or 15. And that now reads, and each member of the board has this, the two building lots off Bartlett Court must have, at minimum, the binder course of pavement installed, together with all utilities. Okay? So, there's no mention of Bailey Lane. Bailey Lane exists, they are going to make improvements to it, but, you know, as it is today, it's a buildable road.
John, just only because we're discussing it right now, what I'm looking at says, "Together all utilities."
Together, oh...
So, just as a typo.
Yeah, I can make that change without changing the pages.
Okay, anything else you want to add?
They have now, they're up to date with all M account fees, so we have those in place.
Great.
Yep, so all the balances will be brought up to speed.
Before we bring it back to us, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, looking for a motion from the board.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just process question, at this point, and I'm sorry if it's gone on and on wrong, have we actually voted all of the waivers at this point?
No, that's...
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the requested waivers.
Second. That is a, that is a motion here.
The waivers as...
Sorry, Jim.
The waivers as submitted on page two and three, there's 13 done.
Oh, cool. Oh, okay. Well, I'm just gonna withdraw that, and I'm just gonna read this.
All right, why don't you just, all of them?
Yeah, I move to approve the OSRD special permit, oh, wait a minute.
Nope.
Subdivision plan.
Just go to the motion for the requested waivers on page three.
Oh, boy.
Put your glasses back on.
Oh, there it is, now I see it. I move that the following waivers from the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land are hereby granted by the Planning Board, because it has been determined that such action is in the public interest and is not inconsistent with the state subdivision control law.
Do I have a second?
Second. That was put so much better than I could have put, thank you, John.
So, the motion has been made and has been seconded to move that the following waivers, one through 13, and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision land are hereby granted by the Planning Board, because it has been determined that such action is in the public interest and is not inconsistent with the state subdivision control law. Any... No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anonymous on the waivers, and we have one more item.
I move to approve the OSRD special permit site plan, definitive subdivision plan entitled definitive OSRD Bailey Village Georgetown Massachusetts, prepared by Williams &amp; Sparrages?
Yes.
Yes.
Dated January 30th, 2017, last revised October 11th, 2017, consisting of sheets one through 10 and notes one through six on sheet one, and as further referenced on the attached notice of decision, approval of an OSRD special permit site plan definitive subdivision dated January 10, 2018.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
So, motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the OSRD special permit site plan definitive subdivision entitled definitive OSRD Bailey Village Georgetown, Massachusetts, prepared by Williams and...
Sparrages.
Sparrages. Dated 30 January 2017, last revised 11 October 2017, consisting of sheets one through 10 and notes one through six on sheet one, and as further referenced in the attached notice of decision of approval of the OSRD special permit site plan definitive subdivision dated 10 January 2018. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five yes, zero no.
Motion to close the public hearing for the OSRD special permit for Bailey Lane.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded to close the public hearing for the OSRD special permit Bailey Lane. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Got it.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it, appreciate your patience with us.
Likewise.
Yeah.
Likewise.
Back at you, man.
Just got it today.
I know.
And I went home and had dinner, and my wife didn't notice.
Well, I noticed, I didn't get to tell you, you look great.
That's why you come to the planning board.
Have a good evening.
Okay. So, that was, that was the first item under Planning Office, there's one, two, three, four, five more items under Planning Office. The next one is the review of the OSRD proposed amendments and schedule a public hearing for proposed amendments.
There you go.
So, you're all having your copy that in your packet, that draft copy of the proposed OSRD amendments. John, do you want to...
As I, you know, wrote in the staff report, which is brief, this is a compilation of amendments that were provided by Harry and myself, Tilly offered amendment language to...
I, no, you two wanted to do it, and then I brought mine.
Oh, great.
You wanted to do it slowly, I guess. So, if you wanted to pass them out... These stickers, papers are sticking here.
So, these are additional?
This would be additional.
Okay.
Are we looking at the whole thing? Or is it a cutoff?
Yeah, well, that's one section, and then the next section was a divvy.
So, okay, so before we get to this, then, I just want to, so John, did you, was there anything that you had to add, that you wanted to highlight about this, or then we'll...
No, not really, other than, you know, we worked on it slightly as a group last year, and it was deferred to this specific meeting date. I think we're in a position where we have time to, to go through it.
Quarter past seven, yeah.
You know, which wasn't the situation last fall.
Okay.
And, you know, if we're able to get through it and possibly schedule a public hearing, even if it doesn't get scheduled this evening, we should be in a position to move this, that's what this body chooses to do, votes to do, for the town warrant in the spring.
Okay.
All right.
So then, we'll go through each member?
Yeah.
And we'll take comments, so we'll start with Tilly, since we've got this. Can you, can you connect us with this?
Well, what I, what I worked on was, based on our previous experiences with these applicants, was from our last meeting, in fact, we discussed the yield plan.
Where would I find that, John, in the packet?
It's not there.
It's not there.
This is adding to it.
This would be adding specific sections to what already exists.
Okay, where do you...
Near 53, I think that would be.
Near 53.
16553.
Basic maximum number of lots dwelling units?
You got it.
Determination of yield, thanks, Harry.
Yep.
Okay, I'm with you.
So, there was no explanation, per se, and I thought it was important to put it down exactly.
So, if I could add, so, section 16553, basic maximum number of lots dwelling units, so, section, subsection A of that section would remain the same, along with its two paragraphs that do have amendment language within it, and then what you're proposing, Tilly, would add to that section.
The pages aren't numbered, where are you?
Yeah, sorry.
I think Harry's way of doing it, it's section 16553.
Yeah. So, you just have to follow the sections. It's right in the middle of the pages.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
If I'm following along, and hope I'm not out of line, if I'm following along, Tilly, you're saying that this would be added after the paragraph that's there, the, I see 16553, where it says, "A, determination of yield, one," and then it goes on, and it goes on to the next page, and then, in other words, this would be...
Two.
Two, essentially.
Right.
It makes sense, I mean, one talks about a yield plan, but it doesn't define yield plan, I don't see it divided anywhere else.
Yeah, yeah. I think a lot of places, and, you know, since we're just chatting about it, if I may, I mean, from my perspective, we've always looked at the lots that come in under the conventional, and I think one of the things we do is, a lot of times, we, we look at them pretty much for their geometric design, does it have frontage, does it have depth, things like that, but one of the things I think we seldom do is, can you really build this lot? Is it for real? I mean, is it on a, is it on a hill? Is it, is it in the middle of a swamp?
Parish, Parish Lane sort of, was that kind of a lot?
Like Parish? Yeah, yeah, I guess you could look at it that way, yeah.
And the yield plan was key, really, to...
Is that an open hearing right now? Harrah Road?
Yeah.
Or was that?
Yes, it is.
Is that an open hearing?
Yeah, we continued that until the next meeting.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, the one that we just voted for, Harry, was...
This OSRD?
Yeah.
Okay, that's an example, that's close.
So, it's over now, so we can...
Yeah.
Excuse me. As I recall, he, the concept plan came in, and he had a whole different plan than what we had agreed to and signed today, right? And the reason, when I asked him, how come he did change that, like, it was like in mid, mid-time there, half a year was gone, he said that when he went to perk it, one of the lots on the court did not perk. Now, that should have been determined back in the concept plan, I think. We should have determined how many lots will perk, and it wasn't done, you know?
So, my only question about that, though, is, doesn't that involve the applicant doing a lot of engineering work for a lot that's never going to be built? And possibly a lot of, I mean, potentially, right, a lot of cutting trees or things like that, that doesn't further the goal of preservation of a, of an open space?
Well, I kind of put myself in the hands of, if I was developing the land, and buying the land, number one, I would like to know, and I would hire an engineer to do the perk test to see how many houses I could, could build on it, how valuable that land is, and what the price should be, so those kind of things, I think, is already done by the person interested in buying.
So, the way it would normally happen in our office would be where it's a paper exercise, where you're not expending those resources that you're talking about, and you can gather that information from soil studies that are already in place, and it's just, you kind of, you create a, you create your base map, it has topography, if you don't have a survey, you piece it together from tax maps, you know, and you put in topography based on USGS, and you walk it to make sure that it's legitimate and that it's real, and you, you take the soils analysis and you start figuring out, is this going to be perkable theoretically based on that, and it's just, it becomes a paper exercise so that the engineer can tell the applicant, you know, you got a property here that you can probably get this many on, you know, and it's a plus or minus, and so, I think a lot of this stuff can be done that way, I'm not sure about the perking issue.
So, you're saying it's not unreasonably burdensome, then?
I think perking, it is unreason, is, is burdensome on the applicant.
Perking is, but the rest of it is not.
Correct. The rest of it should not be, it should be pretty standard stuff, yeah.
And then, my only other comment about, about this is that, so, so maybe I'm a little too friendly to the developers on this, but I kind of feel like, the quid pro quo of the OSRD is that we kind of go like this, just a little bit on some of these, on some of the, on the yield plan, so that we can have the developers do the OSRD, because to me, I mean, there is a benefit to the, to the town, so maybe they don't, maybe it's not a 100% buildable lot in the yield plan, maybe it's got a little corner here or there that's not quite right, but we kind of, maybe are a little bit more relaxing on some of those rules, so that the developer can come to us with the OSRD, and we end up with this open space.
Mm-hmm.
But I might be the only one that feels that way.
Well, the thing about it is, is that with the example I just told you about, he completely wiped that lot out, so there wasn't, per se, a corner.
Yeah.
You know?
So, what you're saying is, he got more based on a yield plan that he initially presented that shouldn't have been allowed, if we know that the, that the yield plan wasn't...
Yeah, just, yeah, that's, basically, I didn't have any proof, because we didn't have a process.
Can I just throw something out here, and the whole presumption is that there's a lot of land, and to qualify for OSRD, you're protecting by definition, because it's OSRD, you're protecting 60% of this land, so, just for general figures, the entire development that would have been 100% of that land now falls on 40% of that land, with what you're saying, and I think the question is, if I have a yield plan on 100% of the land, decimating it, cutting every tree, flattening it out, building on it, building roads, building houses, my yield plan would be, I'm just gonna say X, so I don't have to use a real number, I'm gonna say X, OSRD lets the developer put X on the 40%, that 40% that isn't, that isn't protected, that's to be developed, from, and I'm sure there would be some philosophy out there that would say, if X could fit on 40, and we're preserving 60, why not X plus one? Why not X plus two? Why not 2X? The idea being that if it was a conventional subdivision, the entire lot would be gone, and it would be developed, but because it's OSRD, we're limiting it to only 40% of what would have been developed, and almost, what's the difference with the density is? How does it change anything? From our perspective, we protect it 60%.
It's not, you're, you're in the wrong category to define this.
I'm trying to connect what you're talking about.
Well, if we were, if we were one or two off, I think what Matt's saying, if we were one or two off, and, and the real, actual yield that the developer could have built if he did the 100%, because there might be an area of ledge that wouldn't have allowed two of the houses, let's say, to perk, just stone cold ledge right underneath the entire parcel, underneath those two lots that we drew out by our paper exercise, say those weren't actually developable, you go in there, you try to dig down and get a perk test, you can't even get down, three inches under, you're in a rock, that's it, you're in ledge, you're not gonna, you're not gonna perk anything. That would have reduced the yield.
Right.
Okay? So, but because they have that, because we didn't do it, we didn't do soil perk tests, then the yield has inflated somewhat. What I'm saying is, is it all that important to get that number right, when the goal is to protect that 60% of the open space of the lot? Does it matter if we're plus one, or if we're minus one? Is that all that important? We've achieved the goal, we've kept that entire parcel from being developed, and we've preserved 60% of it. Remember, most of these OSRDs in other communities, talking 50%, we're in Georgetown, 60, we bumped it.
It's as accurate as humanly possible, is that's what you're striving for, the thing about the...
For fairness, for fairness, I get it.
You know, that's, you know, it's not, it's not rather, it's not rather, we want to change the open space dimension at all, that's not, at that point, 60% is what the applicant is going to save, so it doesn't reflect anything on our open space, how many other lots he has on the 40%.
Well, what I'm saying, Tilly, is, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but if, if I were a developer, and I had a lot, a plot of land, and I come in here with my engineered drawings for maximization of using every inch of that parcel, and I fit our subdivision regulations, I can do a standard conventional subdivision, and yes, I will cut. I can do a standard conventional subdivision, and yes, I will cut every tree on that lot. It will be down to bare bones, but I will fit them all in. I fit my road, and I have my lots.
But it.
But, but I'm not doing that. I'm saying I have a number of houses that I believe, units that I believe I can build, and now I'm building them on 40%. And that's the whole thing behind OSRD. I'm not losing any money because I'm only building it on 40% of the land.
Listen, the OSRD, they make.
You're making more money.
In a sense, but. I lose a little bit of value because now the house is a dead sum.
Depends on what you're building there.
They're closer. So I think that's a wash, though.
I think it's a win-win. I do. I don't think we need to get into whether they make 5% more or 5% less. It's a win-win. They get some benefit.
I didn't mean anything by that. I agree it is a win-win.
So.
This is what I'm saying, maybe accuracy, so the exact accuracy isn't that important.
Well, it's important when you take all this time. Like, we were halfway done. Well, the developer finds it's perk, it didn't perk. Gone was that plan, so he had to go back to the drawing board, get his engineer with new plans. I mean, it delayed the whole process. And we're trying to strive, I think, for a smooth, quick process.
Would it be, would it potentially be a problem if we were only talking one lot and it was an OSRD that was only dealing with, like, two lots? And it's a small parcel? And fitting that one extra unit on the 40% of the small parcel to begin with would just be egregious? Is it possible that on a small lot scale, that one extra could be an issue?
One would ask, if we're preserving 60% of a small lot, should that be preserved? What is it abutting? I almost look at it as though, sometimes on CPC Conservation Commission and Park and Rack people come in, and they look at it as though we want to preserve, we want to purchase for the town this parcel of land, X, and we have a criteria for it. Is it abutting other open space? Is it completing part of a puzzled piece that's missing? Things like that. So it gets more point. There are some open spaces, and I know some people are going to scream when I say this, that are more valuable than other open spaces. Some people might think all open space is a great thing, and, you know, it's tantamount to me being sacrilegious here by saying that some open spaces are just too small to be useful. They don't create a biome from an environmental point of view, unless your biome is one for squirrels. But nothing larger.
Well, you are in agreement that we need a definition for it.
Absolutely. And I agree. I want to be as accurate as possible.
So this is just a draft, if you wanted to improve on it.
Let me, the town engineer is going to look at the, typically would look at a yield plan, correct?
We have had him do that, yeah.
What if we, so forgive me, I'm going to put it in my realm here, but in law, there's different standards for different things. In criminal law, it's, it's.
Reasonable doubt.
No, yeah, proof beyond a reasonable doubt, thank you. And then in civil law, it'd be preponderance of the evidence. I think this is a preponderance of the evidence standard here. This is not a proof beyond a reasonable doubt. So we send it to our, we could make the definition that the, you know, the town engineer is, has a reasonable certainty that the yield plan is satisfactory.
Now, some people may argue that the town engineer is not the person that would do that. It would be a zoning enforcement officer of the town.
That is correct.
Because we're doing something which is very, very close to zoning. We're drawing lot lines for parcel.
So if that's the right person, fine.
I think the way it's written, I think the ones that need to be convinced are the folks in this room right now.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that we, we very quickly look at a yield plan and we see it, we look at the conventional plan, and it's, okay, this is how many we get, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, a pound is made, and then suddenly it's flipped, and here's the OSRD plan. And there's a lot of green there, and we just sort of jump over it. I don't think we pay enough attention to the individual lots that are being represented on the conventional plan that are proposed for yield. I personally don't.
Well, then I agree with Tilly, then, but we don't, this, as it's written, doesn't give us enough to make that determination, I don't think.
In a perfect world, with everybody assigned duties and responsibilities, a yield plan, the number of lots on a plan, a conventional subdivision, that's determined by the zoning enforcement officer. And typically in Massachusetts, that's the building inspector. Now, the building inspector in determining, you know, the number of lots based on the yield plan criteria that's already in the zoning ordinance, he can draw upon additional expertise. He can draw upon the expertise of Larry or whoever else he would like to consult with. A lot of times, it's developed. Yield plans are developed in conjunction with the project engineer, working with the town engineer, and the building inspector. The problem with yield plans is that, you know, people, oh, yield plan, they don't put any thought into it. But it's a real important aspect of proper review, and it's done at the staff level. And it really has to be done right, with staff collaborating with one another and drawing upon the expertise they may need beyond themselves. And so that when you have a plan here for planning board review, public hearing, that yield plan should already be determined in writing, the number of lots that are going to be, or could be created for an OSRD, or if it's a standard subdivision. When it comes before the planning board, staff should have already put in writing how many lots the person is entitled to for that particular parcel. I've been in situations where we've had 65 lot subdivisions on 500 acres of land. And, you know, one of the planning board members, say, a year into the review of this thing, hey, I've never seen anything in writing to determine the yield of lots for this property. Talking about throwing a wrench in the box, you know? I've actually seen something like that happen twice. And, you know, you fool me once, you know? You know, you don't let that happen when you do have a proper review. And I'm just bringing this up for your reference in future matters, that when you have the staff input, it better include a well-documented, calculated yield determination. So 40-acre parcel, it's an OSRD, there are wetlands involved, there are steep slopes involved. Everything's been minused out. What's left is a yield plan of 10 lots, 20 lots, in accordance with the minimum zoning requirements for the lots. And then you go from there.
I'm only speaking for myself, but I would personally much prefer having an applicant come before us for the first time and having something from you saying, you know, staff agrees with yield plan of 43. Staff agrees, or staff says, you know, having that upfront. Yeah, having that upfront. For me, as one person, I would say, thank you very much for doing that work, and I'll take it.
I couldn't agree more. But, so what I'm looking at, though, is that, let's say that John looks at it and says, yeah, there's the yield plan of 10, and the developer says, no, there's a yield plan here of 35. I just want to make sure that we have enough language in this bylaw that John has can back that up. And right now, it says, in accordance with the minimum lot size and frontage requirements for the zoning district in which the tract is located, together with right-of-way requirements.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Yep. Just in the bottom of the middle, in the bolded section of that termination of yield provision. In accordance with the minimum lot size, so that's one thing, frontage requirements, that's two things. Together with the right-of-way requirements, that's three. So that's three requirements for the yield plan. If there are more, and there should be more, I would assume that that should be spelled out more.
It's specified in the most recent edition of the Planning Board Subdivision Regulations. And what I like about that is that there's a reference.
Yeah, and there's a definition for minimum lot size. And it's just not 12,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet. Minimum lot size also includes, you know, X-ing out the wetlands. It has to be contiguous upland.
But could we just change this to, as set forth in subsection blah, 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 blah of the Planning Board Subdivision Requirements? So that it's all spelled out?
Most recent edition.
But if.
I think it is spelled out. I think what we're not doing is, we're not going beyond that. There has to be a step beyond that, because I don't think we prohibit in the planning board regs, I mean, if you want to build on top of a wetland, I don't think the planning board has anything that says you can't.
It's only in the zoning ordinance that would restrict.
Yeah, or conservation, or something like that, yeah. So I think that's the challenge. How do we capture, how do we capture the lots that could really, really be built? I mean, if you went through the process and, you know, you have this square of land shown on a plan, but then.
Well, I think with the wetland issue, I think you would use, you know, the definition of what a wetland is and then the various setbacks that they have, and, you know, you need permits for certain, building within certain. So you would exclude those, because those are maybe, maybe nots.
And septic systems. Septic systems have to be 100 feet outside the buffer. I mean, we used to have language about, thought we had language at some point, about wetland delineations. Did we lose that?
I'm scratching my head. I've seen this attempt before somewhere. But I don't know where.
What I've written? Yeah, I've seen it many, many times on different workshops that we've been to.
No, I mean in our regulations.
Oh.
In our own regulations somewhere.
Oh, I don't know.
The planning board may request further information to justify the determination of yield, including approved wetland and resource delineations, soil tests, and percolation tests. We already have that.
But it doesn't say, the planning board may determine the yield is not met if these conditions are not met. It said, we may ask for additional information. That, to me, isn't.
Ah, so that's what's not clear.
That is not at all clear to me. That we could deny someone their yield, their proposed yield, based on these categories. It is not at all clear to me from this paragraph that we have.
That authority.
That authority.
So a sentence.
Or a provision under which, how that's determined. Who that person is, whether it's the planning board as a whole, whether it's the town zoning officer.
Well, what about, I mean, so we're probably not going to resolve all of this tonight. But with the yield plan, what about taking Tilly's paragraph, plugging it in, adding to that just this idea of the yield plan? Part of this definition is that the yield plan is approved or determined or agreed to by town planner or staff. That that's in there as well. That what you're saying is that, to the applicant, he looks at this and he says, okay, this is what I got to go through. And in the end, I have to make sure that the town planner signs off on this.
Well, that's what I was thinking. You're getting to the point where you wonder, should there be a form? You know, for the staff to sign off on, or approve, or make notes of? And then present it to the board. The board still has to make that decision. I would not think anywhere.
The final determination should be made by the board with recommendations from the staff.
Right, right. And that's what I was wondering, if we should have, from the planning board, maybe a sign-off?
You know, what would also help out with this, and I haven't seen it on plans yet in Georgetown, but it's a development chart for each particular lot. And that's on the yield plan, the conventional subdivision plan, and it's also on the open space plan.
Okay.
So each proposed lot is designated, Lot 1, 2, 3. It shows the gross lot area, minus wetland, minus steep slope.
Gotcha.
And net. And it has to be contiguous upland for each one of those lots.
And that's all great. I just want to make sure that the, in the end result of the bylaw is that if they failed one of those things, we have something to back it up in the bylaw that we could stand on in a court that says, this doesn't pass because of this reason.
That's right. And that's all within the language of the zoning ordinance. And you would do that by adopting language, if it doesn't have it already, to accommodate the language you want the OSRD ordinance to be comprised of.
Mr. Chairman?
Wouldn't you?
I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead.
How would you incorporate that, John? Are you thinking of language that captures what Tilly has here and captures what you're talking about?
Yeah.
To give us something to fall back on.
Some teeth.
You know, some teeth, some veracity here.
I mean, it really would be nice for these plans that are submitted to include, you know, a land chart. We used to call it a hall chart in my previous job, named after the person that came up with the idea. It really works well because it's a perfect reference. It's on the plan that's showing all the lots. And it's derived from the engineer, surveyor, that prepared the plan and signed and stamped. And then that is, you know, just further documentation of what they want to do. And then for our staff and town engineer to review that chart. It's an easy reference point for them to follow of what's being proposed.
From my perspective, I'll be honest with you. We could add a A2 and A3 and A4 and all descriptors of what needs to be added. Do you think you'd be able to come up with wording for that?
Yeah. It would really help out with the plans.
Of course.
The plans that do come in, in my opinion, lack a lot of the real specific details that a lot of other towns require. You know, and that chart just comes in so handy for anybody's quicker, more thorough. You know, oh, wow, I can see that, you know?
That's stuff that you and conservation and the building inspector would be going through in the pre, what's it called, the pre-application conference or whatever it is? The pre-app, the pre-app. That should be all.
Enter department review.
Put up with the word is, de jure.
I'd like to see your copy of that chart. That's interesting.
Yeah, I'll bring a couple of hands, excuse me, to show you that.
That would be great.
So on this issue is what I'm hearing, to take Tilly's language as a start and add some teeth to it, to make it a little bit more forcible.
Yeah.
And add that to this and take a crack at it?
Yeah, and I'll add language that's appropriate for, you know, a chart to be included in further defining.
One of the challenges here, when I look at something like this, is the subjectivity to some of the wording. You know, wildlife preservation, you know, what is that? Steep slopes, what is a steep slope? It can't be one thing for one project and another thing for another. So these things, whenever you come across something like that, it needs to be spelled out.
Yeah, and it needs to be provided for in state statutes, too.
Oh, yeah.
25% or greater slopes, or slopes greater than 25%.
Well.
I think this bylaw also calls out and gives a definition of that in what is called secondary or primary conservation areas. During the design process, it's supposed to be followed by the.
Yeah. See, the catchphrase, too.
So this is, so wait, so what you just mentioned, that this is where.
That's where that's from.
This is where this is repeated.
That's where, yeah, yeah, it does. It does.
So if this is repeated, we have to be careful. Re-referenced. We just, yeah, we need.
This is in the design. It's in how the OSRD is supposed to be designed.
Understand.
Yeah.
But we just want to be aware of it.
But two separate things. One is the goal of the OSRD. The second is why we can knock out your yield based on.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is that we can't say, you just need to read that and you need to make sure that you're not saying something in here that is a complete contradiction.
God bless you. Let's see what John comes up with for his usual wordsmithing magic.
Okay, so that was, that's that discussion. Moving on, Tilly. You had another there on the question?
Yeah, and the design there.
Can you, who knows the section number of that one?
Oh, that's 16556.
Yep. Design standards.
This is, this has been my my thing and I'm, I've. The decrease in the size of the lots should create smaller houses. I'm trying to get my arms around that because, and this is, this is what I come up with. What?
You know what might create that? I'm just theorizing here. Uh, smaller houses more than anything else from here on out is the ten thousand dollar limitation. Property tax deduction.
Oh, right.
That might be a spinoff.
True.
One of many to come. The other will be.
I wish you hadn't brought that up. Just reminds me of so many things right now.
A lot of houses out there that are gonna be dumped because uh.
A lot of changes.
Oh, yeah.
Um. You know, Tilly, it's it, I I I I um, I agree with the idea and the the spirit of what it is that you're trying to do. And 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 I would agree with, that would be great if that worked, if we could do that. I just don't know how the heck you can do, how you can require that of of someone. I. You see it, you see it happening all the time too, the problem where people will buy these lots um in these desirable neighborhoods, you know, and they're small, and then they build these giant homes that just max out and, you know, the neighbors are all going, what the? And it's.
I know.
It's a money game.
There's a way to do it though.
Square footage.
Yeah.
Increases in, so option one in the increases in permissible density is is as it's written. Option two is developers can have an increase in permissible density, provided they create lots less than X number of square feet and provide homes less than X number of square footage on the on that lot.
In a regular subdivision.
Density bonus.
Yeah.
Yeah, in a regular subdivision, I couldn't see.
For smaller houses, a a a an extra density bonus. Hey, you want to create, you got a lot, you you've got a yield of ten. Well, we'll we'll let you build fifteen as long as you keep them under two-bedroom houses under fifteen hundred square feet.
As long as you're limiting it to that forty percent of the parcel.
With a deed re.
What's the difference how many houses are on it in that respect? And this is what I was saying, I think.
Well, what you.
Remember, your your footprint hasn't changed. If we say you could have X number of houses by demolishing the entire lot and developing the whole thing, but now you're going on SRD, so sixty percent saved, the forty percent that's being developed. Does it matter if it's X or if it's X times one point five?
Well, there there are ways that it does, sure. I mean, if there's two houses versus one, then there's two families with kids in the school. There's two, you know, two uh, two families using the same amount of water, uh, the the same amount of.
Twice amount of water.
Twice amount of water, twice amount of trash, trash amount of cars in and out of the, out of the driveway. But if what our goal is, is to have, create more smaller houses, which is a good and noble goal, the way to do it is to let the makes, let let the developers make some money on it.
Mm-hmm. Or at least let them not be penalized financially. Because when you.
I have increased the density, if you finished reading that. I have allowed that increase.
Well, what you're, the way I read what you wrote is that in order to get the density bonus, they have to create certain number of small houses.
Absolutely.
What I'm saying is give them an additional density bonus if they create small houses.
Well, whatever that density bonus is, I'm not, I didn't define.
First blush, I I like that idea.
First, you don't want to give the density. You first, you want to, the way you're describing it is that you're. You have to, you have to make a decision on how, what size the house is to fit on a lot or that that parcel, not a lot. But what you're saying is not, not real out, realistic, saying that the bonus.
So.
First and then?
No, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, right now, if you look at the increases in permissible density, uh, one sixty-five fifty-eight, um. Show not in the aggregate a seed fifty percent of the maximum yield number, computation, blah, blah, blah. Uh, open space feature additional five percent of the site. So that would be the way it's currently written.
Three bonuses.
You can get three bonuses.
Extra open space.
Yep.
Affordable, affordable housing bonus.
In a small.
And historic.
Okay, so let's add a fourth category.
Stand.
A small house category.
Would that include condos, uh, attached, uh, structures, apartments?
It meets the needs of the town.
I'm I'm not criticizing.
No, yeah.
I'm, I'm. I don't think anybody's criticizing. I think we're brainstorming.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But this is a discussion that really needs to be had.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the issues, of course, is what's the nature of the town now? What impact is this gonna have on the nature of the town? Um, it could very well start the development of other. Or, uh, urbanization is too dramatic a term, but um, uh, additional development of uh town center.
Well, so you drive around some of the older community, older developments in town. I'm trying to, I'm drawing a blank. I can do it better with.
Back at the high school.
Yeah. You 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 drive down some of these older developments and they're cape, they're capes or they're uh ranch-style houses that have fifteen hundred square feet, two thousand square, square feet. You drive down any development that's been done in the last twenty-five years and there are twenty-five hundred, three thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet houses. Just without question, everything that's come in to see us in the last, that as long as I've been on the board has been that size. The only way we're gonna go back to seeing those smaller houses, which, you know, again, is something that the town has identified as a need, is if we give the developer a a great incentive to do it.
Well, that's what I'm, that we were trying to find out. Because what's what's the problem with those old developments at that time is that there's sprawl there. We're not really utilizing the open space that we could as a community or as the neighborhood or whatever. It's just isolated.
Interesting, um, street, um, only because I live on it, it.
Well, that's.
Yes, it is.
Really?
Justin Street, it's one of the oldest streets in town and it was a part of.
Doesn't go anywhere.
It used to, but it's, but um, and you look at that, it's it's what you're talking about, Matt. The houses are all two thousand square feet and under. I can spit to my neighbor's house and um, that's just the way it was back then.
One of the nicest streets that I think of that should be like, the ideal street, Cedar Lane. Nice. It's not a twenty-six foot wide.
Yeah, ours road is sixteen feet wide.
It's 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 not, it's not sixteen, it's a little greater than, I think, probably eighteen.
Yeah.
But um.
Yeah.
Twists and turns, so you can't go too fast. Cedar Lane, off of, um.
Downtown, yeah.
Um.
Oh, okay.
Houses aren't hu, the lots aren't huge, the houses aren't huge, it's a neighborhood, um, so it's a lot of, well done.
If you look at one sixty-five fifty-four, uh, at least fifty percent, uh, blah, 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 minimum lot size shall be ten thousand square feet, which the planning board may waive where it's determined that further lot area reductions will further the goals of this bylaw. Additionally, this requirement may be waived uh for any developer seeking the density bonus for the, for the small, for the small housing project.
Keep one thing in mind, when you go start to get into these smaller lot areas.
Yep.
Um, where are you putting the septic?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Okay, the septic's gonna take up a little.
Cedar Lane is a fifteen thousand district, fifteen thousand square feet. That's the downtown area, RA.
Mm-hmm.
All of the development we've had lately is not near RA district.
Oh, granted, Tilly, granted, and I'm just saying, you know, you can have a very nice, um, a beautiful neighborhood, a very valuable neighborhood.
Yeah.
And you don't need, you don't need huge lots, you don't need huge homes. It's just, it's a value thing.
Can I just, can I just add something?
Please.
Because it's really an intriguing discussion about this, but it's a huge national movement to.
Tiny houses?
Tiny houses. No, not not tiny houses, but condensing the houses. Bedford, Mass, um, practices this all the time. Uh, Lincoln, you know, they, Lincoln, Carlisle, all those communities and now, you know, they're planning for the smaller houses, condensing the development, um, literally from here to that wall is your next-door neighbor. And they're two-bedroom, you know, smaller three-bedroom houses. And they're fulfilling a need um for the community, for the market out there. An intense need that's not being met right now by developers. And you do have to give them that incentive of density. You know, you don't really have to go increasing the numbers wildly or anything. Um, reducing the the density or or.
Increasing lot area.
Increasing the density, compacting everything saves the developer money. That's why they like OSRD. OSRD is, you know, it's half the roadway cost.
Infrastructures, yes.
You know, and everybody goes that way. If you go into this next realm that's all over the country now, but, you know, close by Bedford, Mass, they have some beautiful developments going on like that, Amherst, you know. They they just en- embrace that stuff.
Condos in April that are.
Condo units.
Yeah.
And very.
You're saving even so much more land than OSRD development with this. And you're also providing for that smaller house that is in such demand because the cost of these houses is so cost prohibitive for most people.
Well, and you have boomers who are gonna be retiring, who need, really don't need that big house.
Right.
And you have their kids, the boomers' kids, who can't afford to live in it.
Is this just, is this just for single family we're talking about?
Um, yeah, it it is basically. The, the, single-family self-standing.
Cause I, cause I mean, to to Bob's question just then, I, you know, duplexes and and triplexes and.
That could be worked into the thing too. The 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 issue is, is that as a society, we're vastly becoming a country where the affordability of owning your own dwelling is becoming.
Unreachable.
And it's, and it's, and it's not that the developer isn't gonna make the money. The market is going to tell, give them the money.
I was gonna say that the the reason why they build the big houses, people want them, there's a hell of a market for it. People complain about why is housing so expensive here? It's because people want to live here.
Yeah, but.
They're dying to live here. And and I think that that by creating opportunities for smaller places, we're not gonna, we're not attracting uh poor people.
In the, in this particular area, it, the price of land dictates a bigger house. That's the number one factor. You can't go out and and spend four hundred thousand dollars for a lot.
You're not making any more.
Build a two hundred thousand dollar house.
Yeah.
It doesn't, that makes no economic sense. And when you have people able to buy, you know, million-dollar, two-million-dollar homes and, you know, that developer gets that property, tears down the existing house and, you know, buys the lot for four, five hundred thousand. He's not gonna make any money. And that's what he's in the business of, making money so he can put food on the table. And he has to build, you know, a million and a half dollar home.
Need the square footage. Square footage equals dollars.
This is, this is a really, this is a really important.
Yeah.
Issue that we're talking about. Um, would it make any sense to get some feedback from some developers?
Well, it would be important to do that, but, you know, this goes actually beyond OSRD. You know, it's another type of development we're talking about that the town could accommodate. The septic systems could be provided for with this type of compact development. And with, that's what it might end up being called, compact, single-family development. Um, we have municipal water, you know, and we're not talking about increasing, you know, the number of dwelling units per acre. It's just providing for a a market need out there and providing the catalyst for developers to be incentivized into in building.
See, I disagree with it. I think that we have to provide developers with an opportunity to create more housing lots.
I fully agree with that. You have to. They won't do it otherwise.
Right, because if they have a lot that they can build a four thousand square foot house or on a twenty-five hundred square foot house, they're always gonna choose the four thousand.
On a per acre basis, on a per acre basis, you allow for, you know, the bonus, but you're not really.
Yeah, substantially. It's not changing it from.
Because instead of a four-bedroom, you're doing a two and three-bedroom.
Right.
A five-bedroom.
Still need a foundation. You still have to bring your plumbing. You still have to bring your electric.
I would like, can I, can I just?
Yeah.
Steal the floor one second. I would love to be able to stay with the OSRD, clean it up, and for us to make as a goal this year to explore this compact development. And that would be a new section of the zoning ordinance, you know, as opposed to recreating this. This is still going to be um utilized by developers. But, you know, introducing, you know, from standard to OSRD to a compact development. So opportunities, zoning opportunity that.
Politically, that would kill it.
I I want to make sure that we take this OSRD and we fix what we think is wrong with it. That's the primary goal. That's, I think, what we should be striving for. What we're talking about, I don't believe it's pie in the sky. I think it is achievable. But I think, I agree with John, it is something separate in this thing. Let's let's keep the two of these apart for now. Until we fix the OSRD.
As a separate bylaw and never get through town meeting.
If if that's what we come up with after we fix this.
How about, how about this? Okay. You know, I don't want to sound like I'm flipping, you know, Hamburg is here, but um, say we stay with this and we work on it and make it really what we want it to be. And if it takes more time than, you know, goes beyond the spring town meeting into the fall, so be it. But, you know, it's, because it's not gonna hurt anybody because it already exists. We're now much more, I'm much more familiar with it than I was, you know, in February of last year when I first arrived. But, you know, we're comfortable with it now. Projects are being approved in accordance with the existing language. And in the meantime, we know it needs to be cleaned up.
Hmm.
And then we also know now through this discussion tonight that, hey, we can really make this into really something special that's meeting the smaller housing need um out there. So, you know, a subcategory within the OSRD could provide, you know, the incentive.
I I I lean that way.
Sounds almost intelligent.
I don't think it's that much more complicated.
I don't think it is either.
I think it's, it already exists, the density bonus. We just have to add a category in my, in my humble opinion.
I I I would like to repeat again, maybe it's not having a developer in here, but I think somebody outside of this group, including John, somebody, you know, with with fresh eyes when we're done, that has experience in this, needs to look at it and say.
And there are, there's real good existing model language out there.
Absolutely. That's the other thing. We, we, this isn't, we don't need to reinvent the, no, no.
Yeah.
Totally agree.
Can I ask, will the desire to add this to it, and I hope, I'm sure we can do it with a paragraph or two and add it. Will this, would we let this prevent us from bringing this to town meeting in the spring?
I hope not.
Because.
I don't think, that's the part where I would like to segue and just say, no, we should get this.
At that point, drop it. And then we we go with the fixes that need to be made.
Yeah.
Things like the affordable housing.
But we have five meetings between now and.
Uh, I don't know what the cutoff is.
I'd be willing, I would be willing to have, I'm always speaking for myself, I would be willing to have another meeting where this is the only thing on our agenda.
You know what, though, next, next meeting should provide us again with a good opportunity because the only thing of substance.
Have time though to.
Yeah, yeah, you know, enough time to.
Move it forward.
Yeah. Um, because at the next meeting, the twenty-fourth of this month, um, we're only dealing with substantially um the sixty-six Parish Road.
Okay.
That's still in a concept. And I I don't know if they're even coming back at this point. They may be in the middle of amending their plans in accordance with what, what we came up with, so.
Would, Mr. Chairman, would it behoove us to authorize John to um post and notice the public hearing for the OSRD amendments? At this point, where you post it, you get it in the newspaper and you have to wait so many weeks and all that stuff until you're finally opening the hearing. And then once you open the hearing, that night, I mean, you could, you'd have the opportunity to bring in some developers.
Providing that he doesn't put the words in. If he could just do uh, we're amending the OSRD from X to X.
Absolutely.
And that's it, without all the words. I think you could legally do that.
The only, the only thing we're doing, and if I'm following correctly, yeah, the only thing in doing that, if some, something of substance, substantial change to it and we've already advertised it.
Well, that's why you avoid the wording. You you just say you're mending the OSRD. And that's it. And then, and then.
We're, we're amending a lot of it.
I think that makes.
Got a lot of changes here.
I think it's not substantial.
I think that vague, that vague approach. I think that would be the way to do that.
You're interested in it, especially if you're a developer and somebody that makes a living using this. And on that, on that side of the table, it would be an excellent time to hear, hear about what they think.
Welcome.
I think that's where you get a little bit of input.
It would, it would be nice if people show up. I, I don't have a lot of faith in that. Well, I, I think Larry could, but, um, I just, I'd also like to, you know, there are people out there that this is all they do. And, um, it'd be easy enough to track down and, and, and ask, you know, would you be willing to come in? Or would you be willing to just take a look at what we've got and give us your feedback? One way or the other, we can get some feedback from them.
I mean, ultimately, as long as we end up with a document that reads well, it's understood by everybody that's reading it.
That's the case. That is the case.
Yeah. And if it gets people to build smaller houses, that's good too.
It's buried in the OSRD.
Can we, um, listen, on this issue, um, we're gonna put this in John's camp. He's gonna come back to us with the next meeting and we'll have a new, uh, draft of this and we'll pick it up again.
Can I just make one other small comment for John on, on, really small?
Okay.
Um, uh, one sixty-five fifty-eight increases in permissible, permissible density, your comment. Second to last page. Comment H twelve.
Oh, okay, H twelve.
Um, if we can just move that over to the, um, create a separate section for affordable housing. Start that section with.
I, I'm missing you. I have one sixty-five fifty-eight.
H twelve, the.
H twelve, comment H twelve.
Should, should, no, H, uh, H twelve on the comments?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Projects of five or less approved units.
Yeah. If we could just create a separate affordable housing sub paragraph. That says, that says all projects are subject to the Town of Georgetown Inclusionary Housing by law. So that it's taken out of the increase in permissible density section.
Well, i- i- if you notice, my comment is that, um, that we strike that completely.
I, 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 no, I understand. I just want a separate paragraph, a separate section somewhere that, with its own heading. That says all projects are subject to the Affordable Housing Inclusionary by law. Clear. Yep. So that there's no confusion, that that's not a part of the density bonus. It has nothing to do with the density bonus. All these projects are under the, have to meet the Affordable Housing Inclusionary by law provision. Whether it's a density bonus, not density bonus, OSRD, not OSRD, it all has to.
That's clarity of writing and.
It's what we ran into with. Mr. Ruta.
Bear in mind.
Wanna send me that in email wise?
Yeah, I don't know where it would go, but I'd be good with just cutting that sentence right out because.
Exactly. Cut that whole section right out.
That sentence appeared, we never had to deal with it.
One sixty-five fif- sixty. Doesn't, which doesn't exist right now.
Oh, gotcha.
All projects shall be subject to the Town of Georgetown Inclusionary Housing by law. Period.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then we would strike.
Projects of five or less?
Yeah, so everything past that, from projects five or less, just strike that out.
Shall be, and it ends with six units or more shall be subject to one sixty-five seventy-one. Yep. But we leave in computations around it. Which we need to.
Yes, that needs to stand there.
So just what's highlighted, right?
Yeah.
Just pulling out what's.
That was all perfectly fine. I just wanted to make sure that that.
Yeah, you'll, you'll send it still.
Sure.
Yeah. All right.
So that, um, that addresses, uh, Tilly's, uh. Handout. Um, how does the board wanna hand over? So you have, you have, uh, a number of additional, um, planning office items to go over.
Mr. Chairman, are we done with this?
Well, what I'm thinking, I, I don't think we are.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I thought we were.
Well, we're done with this particular.
Okay.
Item.
So in, in closing, do we wanna?
Else wanted to comment. And what I was gonna suggest is instead of going through all of us right now. I'd like to go on and, and kill the rest of the agenda. And then if we have time, people want to, we can come back to this and everyone else can have another crack at it.
I'm good with closing it out right now and what he's, what he's gonna do. Just wanted to know if, um, we wanted to do a, um, authorize John to post a public hearing when he's ready. When he thinks it's most apt.
Yeah, and I think the general language.
Motion authorize John to.
Do we want to bring this back onto our agenda next week? I mean, uh, the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to.
And then, um, I'll advertise for the first meeting in February.
We'll trigger whenever, whenever you.
Okay, so, um. So that, so that's that. Um, so moving on in the agenda. To item number three under Planning Office, which is discuss upcoming joint meeting with Economic Development Committee. Um, John, you wanna summarize that for the board?
Yes, um, hopefully everybody got an email referencing this.
That was pretty self, that was pretty clear.
Yeah. Um, so that, uh, meeting has, um, been canceled, basically. That's the long and the short of it.
And it'll get rescheduled or whatever and people will be notified and so on. Okay.
I have not been getting, um, email from, yeah.
Really?
Now, I, I haven't been going on, on the, the town site and gotten it that way. But I, I had had it forwarded to a Google dot com. Am I alone there?
I don't do it that way.
So, you go into the site?
I, I used to have it sent to my Georgetown email and that stopped. And it's only now coming to my Hotmail. So if you only had it going through your G, your Georgetown email, that might be why you're not getting it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want it. I don't wanna go to another site.
Right. So you might wanna just get, if, but it was previously forwarded from the Georgetown? No, that might be it. You might wanna just give him your Gmail address.
Okay, I'll, I'll email it to you.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chairman. What did I miss?
Um, not, not really anything. We were just, uh, item three, the Joint Meeting for Economic Development Committee. Um, has been canceled and at, in, in that.
Oh.
Then, um, Bob was just talking about his email communications getting.
He mentioned.
So that's been canceled?
That has been canceled and will get rescheduled and.
Can, can, when, when it gets rescheduled, can we do it on a Wednesday night? Like, we usually meet on Wednesday nights?
Well, I, the point is, the whole board won't be getting with him. Um, there was an email attachment that John had sent out recently.
Yeah, you may not have had a chance to read it today, but, um, there's an issue of the potential for conflict of interest. Involving, um, the planning board sitting as a quorum with, um, another body. And, you know, in the future, we, we'd be talking about potential future developments. And, um, if we're the permit, if we're the permit granting authority, and for most projects we are. You know, we could be found in, in a position of conflict, you know, non-neutrality.
It's a good catch.
Yeah.
It's a legitimate catch.
Yeah.
How do, how does, how does a planning board ever do a master plan?
A master plan isn't a particular project that's in front of you.
Oh, there, there'll be discussions of particular projects. Oh, I, I didn't realize. Okay, okay.
The Economic Development Committee? Yeah.
I didn't see an agenda. I looked. I didn't see an agenda. I don't know if it's general or.
But in any event, you know, the issues of economic development are really coming together. We're having a meeting, um, next Tuesday evening, the first of, of this year. And, um, you know, there are many important elements, um, that are coming together for the National Lab, property in particular. In that area in general. And, um, you know, as well as, um, the downtown area. So, should be a lot of activity in planning for the futures of both those sites this year.
So, uh, moving on to item number four, the review status of unaccepted streets. Uh, we all have that. Peter had requested that the board review these streets.
To what end?
Well, he says with the hope of, uh, bringing it to town meeting in the spring or fall of this year. When I, well, before I, before individually jumping in, John.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I believe the board, um, historically speaking, um, had a process. That the board was involved in and it's laborious to go through all of these roadways. And it's not a simple task. And the Board of Selectmen ultimately have to, uh, request of the planning board. To, um, address the issue of holding a public hearing for a specific list of streets. Um, that they would like them to become public. So the Board of Selectmen is the first entity, the body, to request the planning board to go through the statutory process. A public hearing to establish all of the criteria necessary for a roadway to be recommended by this body. Back to the Board of Selectmen and for the Board of Selectmen to vote to put them on town meeting. For a vote of the people for specific acceptance of specific roadways. Um, in this list, this is the entire list of streets. And, um, of this list, as Peter pointed out to me in his email, that the roadways with asterisks. Beside them on the left-hand side of each page, uh, those are the specific streets that he would like. Um, for the town to move towards, um, accepting as public ways. To run. In any of them, um, as you can see, we're only talking about, um, start from the beginning?
Five of them, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. There's just five.
You know, so in preparation for this evening's meeting, uh, you know, started reviewing the state statutes and the process. Making sure that we're doing it right. So ultimately, this list, and I'm introducing it just in a general manner to the board. But this list has to be produced to the Board of Selectmen. Have them review it and see if they're in agreement with Peter on, um, moving it to the planning board. And recommending that the board, uh, go through the legal processes of, you know, conducting the public hearings and sending it back to them.
If I may comment, Chairman, of all of these streets, the one on here. Should, in my opinion, should be Mohawk Circle. That street is atrocious. How, how it's been this long not getting accepted and built correctly. I just don't get it. I think it's.
He's got a yes beside there, but he didn't put an asterisk beside that one. I'm just curious that.
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
More with yeses than, than, that didn't have asterisk than.
Are, are, are the yeses the ones that he plows? Is this a plow list that's been modified?
What does yes mean?
Yeah, okay. It's a plow list.
The Mohawk Circle one, I think, is the worst street in town.
Well, seen this before.
I don't think they heard it on that side of the board.
What was Peter's criteria for selecting this? What was his criteria for selecting?
Um, you know, in his travels throughout town, you know, that he does recognize that, for instance, Chaplain Hills Road. Constructed way, um, houses are on it. Uh, it just has not been accepted. And I, I know there's circumstances involving that, um, that were beyond the control of this planning board. I don't know if they still are though. That's, see, that's the work that needs to be done to get this list solidly.
What, are, are we a hundred? I'm sorry.
What, what, um, the goal of, of, just so I understand, the goal of, of this list is to give what to the selectman? This entire list as is? Or to give the five that he's asterisk plus whatever ones that we have identified?
Yeah, the, it, the five asterisks in any other streets.
The goal. Okay.
Just to keep it simple.
Okay, so is there, uh, does anybody else have any other, other streets that, in addition to Mohawk? That, that Tilly has mentioned that we should be considering?
There was a street that came in, uh, a while back that was asking to be added. Uh, the.
Oh, but that was, uh, cause they're.
Right. Do, what, do, does anybody remember what street that was?
That, that was, um, Little Hill was.
Little Hill. Thank you.
With, with all due respect, I believe, um, if memory serves, Maureen Lane, um, was, um, the. Developer of Maureen Lane came in asking for us to accept it as a private roadway and, um. Uh, accept it as a, um, an accepted street, a public street. Um, when we had the town engineer review it, um, he found, um. Multiple reasons why it would be a bad idea. Larry Graham's already done a review of that and found many. I- issues.
So are there, uh, so do, so on this, uh, list, do we need the engineer to sign off for us on all of these too?
My, my understanding is, one of the things you need is, you need, you need asbills.
Yeah.
Um, do we have asbills for Longview Way? Who's paying for this?
That's, that's the other thing that's really interesting with this. I mean, it's all right if these are modern roadways. That say, within the last twenty years, the planning board approved, um, with the pretense they were gonna be public ways. Uh, but for whatever reason, um, subdivision was not completed and accepted at that time. Asbill plans produced, the board moved those roadways that brought that particular roadway to the Board of Selectmen. Recommending street acceptance and for them to move towards town meeting for that street to be accepted. Uh, you know, that's all right. But if you're going back, you know, this list includes really old roadways. That, um, history is, time is forgotten. And you're trying to put the pieces together.
Isn't there a limit? Isn't there?
And you have to start doing this, you know, and this, and, you know, just approve them. By voice vote at the, uh, town meeting.
And then it's the town's problem essentially, right?
Right, yeah.
So, for, you're forever then as a town maintaining the road.
But you do get the Chaplain on your money.
That's right, exactly.
Well, that's the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so with these five, and now there's six, so.
What was the sixth? I'm sorry.
Tilly added Mohawk Circle. Um, yeah, would we, uh, we, and, and Harry has commented on Maureen Lane. Um, that was what you said, that was the one you mentioned.
Which already has a asterisk.
Which already, which has an asterisk to it. But he was saying, the town engineer is saying, we don't want.
Yeah, Larry Graham already like torpedoed that one.
So, do we, how about the other ones? Uh, Martell, um, any, any ca- concerns or comments about that? How about Lynn Circle and Longview Way? I'm not flashing on Lynn.
I think you're gonna get a lot of money off of Lynn Circle.
I don't even recognize.
Three O subdivision.
Where is it? Drive me out there.
Drive, drive, drive up Andover.
Okay.
And, um, you take a right, what is it?
Oh, God.
I'm sorry, what, what street?
Going up Andover, you take a right, going towards, like you're going towards the pond up that way. And then you take another right.
Lynn, Lynn Circle.
I don't think so.
It's, it, you're going, you're talking, you're going out, you're, you're going out near Andover.
Andover, no, 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 go up Andover Street.
Right, but you're going out a long way?
Oh, no.
No?
Oh, no, no, no. Um, oh, God, um.
Oh, that's okay. That's all right.
So that's, that's three houses, you said?
I'm pretty sure Lynn is Lynn Circle is a three or four lot.
Well, so then I guess I'm, I'm curious as to what.
It's off Lake Shore Drive.
Ah, Lake Shore, that's it. Yeah, go off Lake Shore and as you get off Lake Shore, it, it's, it's off to your right.
It's a driveway.
So it is.
But, but so if that's, if that's three houses, and I guess then, aren't people on, uh. Some of these other private and, and unaccepted streets, aren't they gonna come forward and say, well, you know, that's three houses? What, what, what about us?
How about the flip side of that? Are we sure everybody on Chaplain Hills really wants a public roadway? It's down to a hundred and twenty-six acres.
We should have a list then for each, we should have a list of criteria.
Yeah.
Do, do they, do, do, do the people want it? You know, do, do, do we have an asbill? Whatever all this list is and make sure they're all checked off on this list that we're generating.
Yeah, I, I had a, I had a. Yeah, I, I had a, I had a, an old map that I made that, when we were doing the, um, the step-by-step, and we were doing one or two at a time. And, um, we, we were doing it by, well, bang for the buck. The longest roadway got accepted for us because that was the maximization of the Chaplain 90 money.
Right, that was the driving force, the spirit.
I've gotta dig out that file somewhere, it's somewhere, it's buried on a desk somewhere.
John, do you have a recommendation for how we should, uh, close this, for this meeting right now?
Not a concrete one. I, you know, I'd just like to say, this is, it, it, and it's a real difficult subject. And I, and I realize it, and it has a lot of politics involved with it. But there's so many private ways that exist that are plowed, maintained. And, you know, this is, this is an issue we touched on when I first got here through the request for one private way. They wanted it to become public, but it was a modern-day privately created roadway. And, you know, language, you know, prohibited from ever becoming a public way. You know, that's a difficult situation to overcome. It can be overcome, but this, this is a swi, where private ways, certain private ways are receiving tax dollars to maintain and to plow, right? And a lot of them aren't paved, you know, they're not, they don't come close to meeting modern-day standards for roadways and publicly accepted ways. But all of those private ways could incorporate it, and they are on the official town map because Mass General Laws requires, you know, any roadway that has two or more houses be included in the official town map. Now, in 84, the town voted to get rid of a lot of private ways from the official town map. And then in 2011, they had to put them back in. We found out one of them in particular was not put back in, and, and everybody forgot about it. And guess what? Private property owners own land along that particular way, and it isn't what a lot of people were led to believe. It's a developable roadway that exists on plans that were approved by this Planning Board, you know, in 1972. But, you know, it doesn't exist, that particular road, one particular road, doesn't exist on the official map. What I'm really getting at, this town should try to wrestle with the fact that there are a lot of private ways out there that are being maintained by the town, but the town isn't getting credit for Chaplain 90 monies relative to the miles of roadway. And I think you could talk this out with the Board of Selectmen to put this thing to rest once and for all, you know, if the town wants to do that. I am so against Planning Boards approving roadways as private ways. And they should never be approved, roadways of subdivisions should never be approved as private ways because sooner or later, there's going to be a public truck, DPW truck, plowing that way. And sooner or later, there's going to be asphalt of a DPW worker plugging up the potholes in that way. And by virtue of doing those actions, the town takes liability for those ways. And you will lose in court by, you know, plowing the road and, you know, ma, partially maintaining the road. And you'll lose in court relative to the argument that that road is not a public way. It is a public way once you stop playing with it and plowing it and sanding it.
Minute, $501 is spent.
Yeah.
That DPW should be brought up on charges.
So-
Minute it happens.
So it's a big issue, and it's an issue for this town, of which there are many old private ways, and there are many new private ways. And it really should come to a head, and the town should make the best decision, most informed decision, wisest decision, fairest decision possible, and, and deal with it.
Well, wouldn't, would, would it be fair to say that where, that where, that's where Peter's coming from? Would that be fair to say?
Yeah.
That, that his, his yeses are based on he's already plowed?
Right, but there's more, there's more to th- this whole thing legally.
Understood, understood. I'm just, I'm, I'm just-
There's a process, there's a statutory process that has to be followed for a town to accept a private way as a public way.
We've been going through that with a map that-
Yeah.
Was hitting it off, we've been, we had a process going.
I, I would suggest that the town move in the direction of a comprehensive review of the subject matter and try to put it to bed once and for all. Because some people are receiving the benefit on private ways of being plowed and maintained while other people are not.
Well, the thing about it is, is that, uh, when we did this in the past, there, I'm sure there was quite an expense with town council doing the research.
Yeah.
I never did see a number, but I'm sure it was costing the taxpayers the money. So I think any one of these people would like to be a, uh, a public accepted street, but they don't want to pay anything extra to bring it up to, and all the expenses involved. You know, I think basically that's the attitude I've heard, is sure, we want it accepted, but we don't want to pay anything. And, um, there have been proposals, when the previous road surveyor was there, to have each house pay a certain amount to help to pay for the expense of getting it up to speed. Couldn't get every house to do it. So, so I think it's, it's a serious-
That's a, that's a, that's a serious problem for many towns.
Yeah.
And I'll say, inside the 128 felt.
Right.
You know, you go through some of those towns and it's like, what the heck? Why is this road in such disrepair?
Yeah.
It's because the parties that live along those roadways refuse to put out the money necessary to properly maintain them.
Yeah.
And the town, you know, they won't get involved because it's not their duty and responsibility.
Yeah.
But, you know, here you have a, a, a town that has been a town for many, many years. And towns don't typically have the money to pave roadways. So you have a lot of gravel-based roadways, um, you know, some type of aggregate-based roadways. And, you know, they get potholed pretty quickly, and they have to be graded every year, you know. And, and, you know, for the town to think that they'd ever have the amount of money necessary to start paving all these ways, it's impossible to, to fathom, so.
Sure.
You know, there has to be, part of this whole discussion has to be the agreement that, hey, these ways will become public, town plows them. However, the town is not responsible for any new type of surface being applied to them. Now, the town may be willing, as they do in the northern reaches of New England, in smaller towns, to go out there on an annual basis, and, and they get a grader, and they grade the, the potholes smooth, and they stay that way till, you know, the following spring, and then you go out there again. And that's how they maintain roads up there. Gravel roads, for all intents and purposes, really are cheaper to maintain, um, and they serve the purpose. You know, and, and when you, when money's tight or impossible to acquire, um, you know, that's the only alternative, you know, well, gravel road. They're all over the country. There's probably many more miles of gravel road paved.
So what, um, so I just wanted, so what is our role, then, tonight with this? What are we doing tonight with this?
Per the memo I received from Peter in this attachment.
Yeah.
If the board wants to, this is a general discussion for our interest.
Yeah.
The board could move tonight to say, hey, we've looked at this particular list, and we agree that the five streets with asterisks plus Mohawk Circle, we, we are interested in the Board of Selectmen moving in a direction of, um, accepting as a way, as way, as public ways, in that, um, we are willing to go forward this year in preparation for the spring town meeting, um, to hold the necessary public hearings to recommend further to the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with the Mass General Laws for accepting-
But how, but where, where in that, and when does it happen that, that each of these roads is reviewed for this criteria list of, you know, making sure it responds to the statutory requirements? That the actual people living there want it, that we have an as-bill and it's actually worth it?
That would be part of our due diligence. And, and at this point in time, you're really talking about all of this work being done for these particular roads.
Yeah, between now and-
The fall town meeting.
So we're talking fall town meeting? Because I didn't see this happening.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, this is an exercise-
Okay.
That we have to do all this due diligence for and hopefully achieve an end goal. And that is to formally recommend to the Board of Selectmen, after all the criteria is met, for them to put on a, a town warrant for street acceptances and then have the people vote on it.
So this is step one, and step two would be to then bring the bigger issue up to the Selectmen?
Yeah.
And address it once and for all, okay, so that's clear?
What if we find out these streets are substandard, I mean?
Well, that's the due diligence part.
Yeah, this is, this is- See, wha, wha, we need to do tonight, if we want to, right? I'll, I'll draft a letter to the Board of Selectmen, hey, um, Board of Selectmen, these streets have been brought to the board's attention by Pete Durkey, that he would like to have them accepted as public ways. We're willing to do our part in accordance with the state statute, but we need to be-
Which is answering that question you just raised.
Yeah, but we need to, we need to have your recommendation, Board of Selectmen. We need to have your recommendation back to us in writing that you want us to fulfill-
To pursue this.
Yeah.
And then, at that point, we answer that question you just asked amongst many others. We may find some of these streets don't get our, don't get, don't pass the muster.
Yeah, but-
I'd be really surprised if I see any of them.
Well, maybe, maybe, but, maybe.
But who pays for that? That, that when we find, when trying to find out whether they pass the-
We do.
Out of our, out of our budget.
Nice segue to the budget discussion, huh?
No, no, but, but no, if, if we don't have an as-bill, we're not paying for it. And, and no one else is gonna pay for it, so the street's off the list.
Okay.
Right, right. Okay, and I do a task, but you know what?
I think what we're doing is moving ahead Peter's request and some, maybe we get one street approved. Okay, so, um, is the board comfortable with what we just talked about? And, and John's gonna draft that, and we'll all take a look at it at the next meeting. Would that make sense, John?
Yeah.
Can we annotate it that the board has grave reservations? Or at least one member has grave reservations?
Okay, so, John, tell me when you're ready, and then I'm gonna move on. So that concludes the review status of unaccepted streets. And we're gonna go to number five, which is discuss legislative slash federal update on recreational cannabis. John, what do you wanna add about that?
Um, you know, I was able to talk to, um, the town administrator, Mike Farrell, about this particular issue leading up to tonight's meeting. So I talked to him today, and, um, ultimately, and it looks like March, uh, the Cannabis Commission is going to finalize their guidelines concerning marijuana. That being said, in accordance with the state statute, as it is written today, if a community has a grow facility, right, and right now we do have one, that by state statute, we only have to require, um, the recreational sale to one facility. It's one grow, one recreational sale facility. And, um, in, in accordance with that, we do have the one, and they would be the only entity entitled to a retail sales establishment within their grounds. And that's what the Board of Selectmen ultimately are dealing with as a subject matter on this. It isn't a matter that, um, you know, we're, we're going to be dealing with, um, an establishment being created in downtown or anywhere else in town. It's within the property of the grow facility that already exists. There is a placeholder being set for the spring town warrant for us as a community to meet the requirements of the state statutes. And as the town wants to approve the statute and the ordinance, the local ordinance that will be provided in the spring, um, it'll be up to the townspeople to vote it up or down. So that's where it is, in general discussion.
What happens with their discussion? What happens with that project that has been talked about out on?
They're, they're supposedly continuing to move forward. We're probably going to deal with a site plan sometime in the near future for that. But that facility, it's already been agreed to in the agreement with the Board of Selectmen, that they're not interested in selling recreational marijuana in the town of Georgetown. It's just strictly a grow facility.
Oh, I, okay.
So that would fall under our medical marijuana.
So it'd be a second grow facility?
And that would fall under our existing medical marijuana.
For some reason, I was thinking it was, okay.
But it would not, it's not going to be allowed to be in the sale of recreational.
Yeah, understood.
Oh, they're, they're choosing to not do that. What, what about a recreational sale bylaw?
Uh, that's, again, there's a placeholder, you know, we're just waiting to get what legislation, what guidelines are finally agreed to. We, in the meantime, though, we could, you know, in doing our due diligence that we're supposed to in accordance with the vote that was taken on the moratorium, right? This, 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 boy, we're probably comfortable moving forward with, um, local, a local ordinance to be considered for adoption that would limit recreational sale of marijuana to the healthy farm facility.
What, I'm, I'm missing something here.
What's that?
Why would we do that?
Um, that's what the statute requires. It, it, you know, you have one grow facility, you only have to provide for one-
Only have to.
What's that?
You're not prohibited.
Only prohibit, where, where does it say you only have to?
No, but if-
Do we want to give a, 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 a monopoly to Cappy's to sell alcohol here, too? I mean, I-
Yeah, but, Matt, it's not up to you, I, or anybody, it's up to the people to ultimately adopt this thing. So they could amend it at town meeting. I don't know what the language is gonna come up with.
I, I don't have a position on it. We don't have to propose it, we don't have to endorse it.
I have no position on this.
The news, the news that I did watch was short about this.
They're gonna engage in it, they're gonna engage in it anyway.
But after, after, uh, watching it, it appeared to me that they are hear, having hearings now on their draft regulations.
Draft regulations have been released.
Yeah. But where are they? We didn't, I didn't see them, did you?
They're 107 pages, Tilly. There's 107 pages of them.
But you're gonna have hearings for it now, which is important.
Well, I think the most important thing right now is for us, as a planning board, to have the hearing for the recreational bylaw that we should be bringing forth to the town.
Right.
Yeah, but you don't, you can't contradict the state.
And in no way would we be contradicting the state.
But if you don't see the states, you're not gonna know what you're doing.
They can, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Jump in, John.
We're, we're, we're under the advice of town council on this matter, and he has not come forward with any email information on this or, you know, any decision.
I don't get that.
So-
You should be right on top of it.
No, 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 I'm sure he is.
It's not that he's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure he is, he's just not advised us yet because things are just not ready yet.
Okay, so what you're saying is, KMP hasn't come up with a model bylaw yet for recreational?
And, you know what, and it may be tomorrow, it may be within two weeks or three weeks that it comes out. But we will have time to deal with it on our end.
John, John knows, John Ickman, Tom KMP knows of the schedule and, oh, yeah. So, so we're just waiting for that from now.
I'm sorry, I just want to go back to this one, one seller piece. I, i- it is an option that the town has to limit it to one, uh, one recreational marijuana selling facility. Has that been discussed by any board in this town and, and, and decided or, or voted on that that is what we should be pursuing?
I believe the Board of Selectmen have been discussing that particular.
Matt, I, I apologize, would you repeat that question, please?
Sure. So, one of the options that apparently is available to the town is to grant a monopoly to a single recreational seller within the town of Georgetown, thereby eliminating massive amount of tax revenue for the town. And apparently, that's been discussed by the Board of Selectmen as a, as the, the, a good option for the town of Georgetown? Okay. Good to know.
I could see creating a recreational marijuana overlay district that possibly wasn't as expansive as our medical marijuana overlay district, where perhaps it would not allow sales in the downtown, but would allow sales in other areas of the town so that there could be competition here and not, you know, so-
I mean, ultimately, Mr. Chairman, ultimately, that's up to the people to decide, you know. An ordinance-
Only to give them the option, John.
Is it going to, to, to Harry's point, is it going to be given, presented to the town that there is this option, or is it gonna be presented to the town that this is the route? Do you know?
Um, I think the town can adopt its own and there could be petitions to adopt a different-
Let's get realistic. If this board were to go forward with a bylaw that allowed competition, would the select board stymie that by, uh, not allowing legal counsel and review?
I would, I would just opine that that would not be the case.
Okay, cool. So, we need to start moving forward with a fair bylaw.
Well, I'm still-
That actually allows competition.
And I, and to repeat, we're waiting on John to get this draft. And that's in the works. I haven't heard that's been stopped.
I'm hearing it.
But-
So, this board was-
Can't believe it, but I'm hearing it.
This board was, um, provided with the town of Raleigh's, um, recreational marijuana bylaw that recently was passed by the town of Raleigh. Um, so either their town council was a bit more Johnny-on-the-spot with their recommendations or they just decided to handle it on their own. Um, there, there's nothing that says we couldn't get started on it.
Right.
Did, did, can I ask, I don't know, somewhere along the line, I didn't get that, but, or I misplaced it or something, but, um, did, did Raleigh use KMP?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Can we ask town, can we ask KMP for when they, when we should expect this draft from?
Yeah, in the discussion has to start.
Yeah, right.
So can, can, can you do that? Can you ask KMP when we might, when we can expect this draft? Because we need to get it going.
You get, try to-
This is just my thought, but we, we have a very nice medical marijuana overlay district that's already been established, that's away from all human inhabitation that could possibly be offended by marijuana. Well, I, it was designed i- i- in a specific location for a specific reason.
It was designed to be-
It was away from schools, it was away from, well-
Well, the, the only question, though, uh, Matt, is, is the retail. That's a different use than in the industrial. That's commercial.
I appreciate that, but what I'm saying is this, this could be graded and it, it shouldn't be a terribly complicated thing, right?
No, it shouldn't.
It shouldn't be terribly complicated, but it's going to be a very passionate, emotional thing which will make it complicated. That's my fear.
Marijuana, uh, medical marijuana is like a CVS coming. Recreational is like another package store. That's sort of a vague mindset.
That's an interesting metaphor.
Thank you.
So the CVS that sells actually dangerous drugs versus the packaging stores and the marijuana stores that sell fairly non-dangerous drugs.
Pharmaceutically-approved dangerous drugs, buddy.
Yeah.
The FDA protects you. Don't worry.
Yeah, and make sure you bring plenty of green to buy green, because you can't use your debit card.
So what we've done with this agenda tonight, we've started the conversation. We're gonna get a date from KMP when we should expect this to come through and, um, there is some discussion to be had here with where we are, where the Selectmen are.
Can't wait for the public hearing.
And we do have a drop dead date in July.
Correct.
Uh-huh.
We have to get this done by July. Right? Because that's when the, the moratorium goes away.
No, we need to get this to town meeting in May.
That's what I'm saying. We have, yeah, you're right. You're right.
You're saying we can't wait till fall.
Right, right. Okay, so, um, that was, uh, planning on item five. Uh, number six, review proposed FY19 Planning Department Budget. And what's been handed out is, um, a cleaned-up sheet, basically.
Sweet.
Yeah, Microsoft failed me for some reason.
Can I blame you?
Say it ain't so.
Chew in the club.
No one's gonna believe you when you say that, John.
Copy they were sent to you in the staff report. I don't know how-
Yeah, you lost some-
Hundred and thirty-six even came in there.
John, what do you want to add about this?
Um, well, as I, as I did state in the, um, staff report, this, this budget that's proposed this evening is in strict accordance with, um, Mike Farrell's, um, instructions. So, it basically equals, um, last year's budget and, um, the year before's. So FY17, 18, and 19 are to be the same, with the only difference, um, at this point being, uh, personnel issues. They've, they're working on that and planning to, uh, resolve any outstanding issues concerning personnel salaries in January, mid-January.
Can we see how much money has been utilized? Can we see right now?
The actual?
From your-
The actuals, um-
Actuals, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll prepare that, um-
Okay, that would be good.
Most of it's still there.
Great.
So if we could, um-
No, not really good.
No.
If we could-
No, okay.
Tilly, since you're, since you've started, how about whatever other questions you have? And I'd like to just go through each member.
That was, that was my question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see what-
Yeah, Harry?
Um, I'm good with the motion, so get to the thing, come on.
I just had a couple of questions.
Okay.
All right, looks like you cleared that up.
Yeah, it's cleared. It's cleaned.
Yeah, I took you, those are done. Okay.
Yeah, sorry, too. Cleaned up, though.
Okay, um, so looking for, I guess a motion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, um, ask John to submit the Department Budget Submittal Form fiscal year 2019 as presented at the meeting this evening.
Second?
Sure, sorry. I'm just, I'm still just reviewing from the-
Motion-
You're still backing the other?
And it has been, um, seconded to, uh, submit to, uh, Selectmen, the town of Georgetown Planning Board Budget submitted for FY2019 is handed out at our 110 2018 meeting. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Fine.
All right.
Okay, so that takes care of item six. The last couple of, uh, member of public concerns. Um, John, just want to fill the board in on Park and Rec, um, what transpired today. So, just for, real quick, it's nine o'clock, it's a few minutes before nine, so we're doing well. Um, uh, we got, uh, Park and Rec. We've been looking for quite some time now for some information, so, for East Main Street. So we can, you know, the town really wants to get this project open in the spring. Um, and, you know, there's an ASBIL you need and, um, uh, we had asked for that quite a long time ago and, um, you know, staff reports from the engineers for the order of conditions and so on and so forth. And, uh, we were supposed to get that today. What's the latest and greatest?
Um, the latest, did you receive the email from me that was sent from Mr. Demento?
The e, the last, the only email that I got was, um, basically it was a contract proposal.
So you did get the attachment?
That was, I just got the proposal. Yes, I got the attachment.
Okay.
That's it?
That's, that's all I've received to date.
Okay.
So we're still working on getting the ASBIL plan, which they say does exist, so.
It does exist.
That's what they say, so, um, we're gonna be moving forward with compiling all the documentation so that I can give that documentation, including the ASBILs, to the planning board.
Okay.
And once I have those in hand, then it's safe to have them come in and we'll have the discussion on what needs to be done, what remains to be done, so that they can open in the spring.
Okay.
I have a, this question about that from when I witnessed the discussion at the Selectmen. I think it was Selectmen. Um, they're proposing or they're, they have plans to add other uses, recreational uses to it. How's that go?
Mr. Chairman, may-
We're gonna have to cross that bridge when we get to that meeting, Tilly.
Okay.
Who knows?
Would you like a CPC update?
Sure.
Related to that?
It's kind of irrelevant. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Related to that, um, um, a, a foundation called the CAMCOY Association came in to the CPC, uh, requesting, um, uh, assistance and funding to, uh, build, uh, basketball courts at East Main Street in conjunction, uh, this was, uh, a group of, group of individuals and, um, they had plans to utilize, uh, an area that it looked to, to have been like the, um, the skate park area. Just to let you know, they, um, they'll probably be looking for, uh, money to study that and figure out where, where they're gonna go with it at this point.
So that, so that'll, that'll-
We haven't heard from them since they left.
Okay, so that'll hopefully come up when we go through this process.
Uh, they, they were informed-
What was going on?
That, number one, they'd need a modification from the special permit from the planning board and also that they'd need to modify their conservation. Remember, there's members of the boards, of all the various boards sit on the CPC, so. CONCOM advised them that they'd need to get CONCOM permitting and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as far as all the different permitting that they needed.
Okay.
Hopefully those folks will, um, will get back to us soon.
Um, so that's sort of just an update for everybody on Park and Rec, which I wanted you to be aware of, because that was kind of like some hot percolating news. And then just, uh, to close the loop on, well, it's actually not closing the loop, but, so we have a Selectman meeting December 18th with the department. It was an interesting meeting, um, I don't know, has, did anybody watch it by any chance?
I don't know, I think I've watched it, but I think that's a long time ago.
Pull that up, all right? Pull it up on-
There, you, you can, um, I think there were some really good things that came out of it. Um, I think there were some things that were, um, a little disappointing that came out of it. Uh, I, I'm not, I won't get into that, uh, any more than that at this point. What I am gonna do is I'm going to, I'm in the process of drafting a sort of a summary, um, memo from myself, but the planning board, but because I was there attending, which is gonna basically be putting into words what I believe we discussed and what I believe was sort of agreed to and not agreed to and that sort of thing. And I'm hopefully gonna get that in the pockets for next meeting so you guys can review it and we can have a more in-depth discussion about it.
Right, I, I just, I, when you do that, what I missed out of the discussion and maybe I missed it just, and you did talk about it, is I didn't think you talked too much about the health issues. And I thought they got wrapped up into the, the cost and the savings and the dollar, but they didn't, you didn't expound on the health issues and why we're doing it.
Well, I, I, um, I tried.
I, I understand, but I think that, you know, that was, that was the strong, if I was there, I would have, and I wasn't, so it's my fault, too.
No, no, it, um, that, it, it's a bigger discussion than to have tonight and, um, I, I, that's part of, you know, what I found disappointing, um, about how it went. But I think it, for me, the best news of all is that, A, everybody was in one room talking about it grudgingly, but we were all there talking about it.
Right.
And B, um, I look at it as round one of many rounds to come. Um, I don't see it as being the end and, um, you know, there's more to do about it. And so I think in that regard, it was a win, so. I would choose to look at it that way.
I agree.
Yeah. Um, so there was nothing else? Anybody have anything else? John?
Uh, just, uh, this plan, the A and R Plan for National Ave to be signed and, uh, the approval for Bailey and Rob, those two documents are for your signature there. Those are the surety reduction dry pie.
Okay.
Your signatures for the decision?
Uh, yes, right in that.
All right. So-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
What a great idea. I would second that one.
I have every now and then. I have one every century or so.
unanimous.
unanimous, all right.